Hello, good evening, everyone. Okay, welcome to our October Board of Education meeting. At this point, I would like everyone please to stand for the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please take a seat. Okay, so we have some exciting news for everyone tonight. Mr. Ruffini is actually our Syosset High School Assistant Principal, who is going to introduce the National Merit Scholarship semifinalists. So I'm going to leave the, give it all to you to introduce these kids.
Thank you. Again, I'm Chris Ruffini, I'm one of the assistant principals at the high school. I'd like to thank the Board of Education and Administration for the opportunity to present their certificates for our 2025 National Merit semifinalists. Syosset High School has 21 students selected for the 70th Annual National Merit Semifinalist Scholarship Competition. Students were selected based on their superior PSAT scores. We are proud of our students as they are only one of 16,000 other semifinalists in the country that were selected, so congratulations. The following students are semifinalists in the 2025 National Merit Scholarship Competition. Derek Chen. Frank He. Marcus Oshino. Shan She. Connor Jin. Catherine Lee. Simone Lim. Jasmine Lu. Yu Yang Lu. Sunai Mahaltra. Rahil Nabi. Lance Feng. Michael Wen. Chloe Shaq. Krishiv Shah. Jay Suk Sing. Samuel Wang. Zhao Tang Wang. Joanne Wu. Catherine Yi. And Winston Zhu, congratulations.
Okay, congratulations again. So this recognition is a testament to your hard work, dedication, and academic excellence. We are very extremely proud of your achievement and excited to see the bright future for you. Thank you again. Congratulations. Okay, now the board is going to move up to the stage to start our meeting. So now if parents, you are more than welcome to stay for the presentation. If not, this is your time to make your graceful exit. Thank you. Okay, so right now we are going to move on to our meeting. And the first item on the meeting is the approval of the minutes of September 16th, 2024 meeting. Can I have a motion, please? Mr. Greco, seconded by Ms. Falcone, are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Okay, and the next one is going to be for Dr. Rufo. Can we have the treasures report and appropriate shared adjustments, please?
As shown on the treasures report, the cash on hand for the month end, August 2024, was $67,130,728.90. It shows that all the bank balances for all the cash accounts were reconciled to the book balances and were collateralized in accordance with the district's banking agreements and investment policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rufo, can I have a motion, please? Mr. Rotolo, seconded by Ms. Koshia, are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? And then next, Mr. Greco is going to give us an update on the September 25th Citizens Finance Committee meeting. Mr. Greco, please.
So this is an update from the last finance committee meeting. We met on September 25th and we discussed a host of things, but we started discussing the two bond propositions that were at the time to be voted on by the community. And we discussed the financing of those bonds, the use of bands and such things. We also had a chance to give the committee, I guess, a little kudos. Dr. Rufo had talked about the positive impact to our investments. You know, our investment income had been based on our recent decision to switch over to investing through NIE class. I believe it was 3.3 million in total investment income and a nice chunk of that was based on the change by moving over some of our investments to NIE class. So the board's decision to do that and to make that move was spawned at a finance committee meeting. So we took the chance to thank the committee for their hard work. You know, we ran short on time, so one of the other issues we were going to talk about was some recent developments related to our insurance carrier, but we'll pick that up at our next meeting, which I believe is November 6th. So anyway, I'm always happy to bring these, you know, summaries of the meetings back to the board. In the past, we had another committee member do that, and it was Michelle Yan, and she did great for many years, so I want to thank her for that. But at the same time, I'm happy to keep doing this unless another, unless another finance committee member wants to do it instead of me. But that also sort of raises a different issue, which I wonder sometimes if, you know, these committee meetings are limited to three board members at these meetings. And then obviously, we have a host of community members that sit on the committee. And I wonder if we should think about sort of appointing some of us to the committee or just leaving it as it is. You know, our sort of our current way of handling things where some members show up. But either way, it really doesn't matter to me. I just thought it was a good time to bring that up. I don't know if anyone has any thoughts on that, but.
Okay. Does anyone need to have some questions or anything, Ms. Ostrick?
So also, I've been a member of the committee for a number of years, and Michelle did a phenomenal job reporting to us, so I just want to thank her as well. You mean, Brian, I want to answer your question is appointing permanent members. You mean from among the board? Is that what you mean? Oh, right. Dr. Rogers, there was, I remember when I first joined the board, there was a resolution, or I saw a resolution about membership in the committee from the board members. What did it say? I can't, I can't quite remember.
I'll try to recollect it off the top of my head. It was adopted by the board prior to my arrival. There were a series of board resolutions, but initially, the board created the finance committee, then had a membership process, then rescinded that membership process and had a more open-ended membership process where anyone who was interested could join and was less formal. So that is my understanding of where it stands in terms of the board, the evolution of those board resolutions for the finance committee.
Sorry, is that members from the community or members from the board?
One of the original resolutions had the president serving as next official member. I don't believe it named any other board members, either by name or by office. And the narrow, then more expansive, membership was a community member focused.
I mean, I'm just thinking back. I feel like I remember whether it was in policy or it was, we have a policy about this, or it was in that resolution. I think it said something like, no more or up to three board members and then obviously, the president is always a member of a committee.
So you do have a policy on committees. Before getting granular, I would want to have the chance to just review it to make sure that I don't misspeak. The concern the board has to be attentive to is the open meetings law. So when you have a quorum of the board present, you have to then ask the question whether the work that is being done is consistent with that of a board meeting and therefore would implicate the need for the open meetings law to be applied. So there are times, I will give two extreme cases, not focus on the gray in the middle, but if all the board members were showing up at a PTA function and having cotton candy together and they happened to all nine be in the same place at the same time, that would not trigger the open meetings law. There would be no expectation that public business would be conducted. It'd be simply a social event. But if there was an expectation that policy for the district was going to be finalized at a committee meeting and there were five board members present, then that would be the opposite end of the spectrum. It really would be work that the whole board should be invited to and should be done in a way that the public had access to watch. So the question is, what kinds of activities in the middle would go either way? And again, I would want to, I would want to quote your policy on committees to you directly rather than just do it off the top of my head.
Let me be clear. So, Dr. Rogers, I'm bringing this up in part because of the open meetings law issue. And of course, we're limited to four trustees going to these committee meetings. But I'm more talking about, do we set up who is going to go in advance? As much for scheduling than anything else. I mean, you know, some board member, I mean, Mr. Ostrick mentioned that he goes to almost all of them. So if other people want to attend the meeting, we can have some kind of schedule that allows us to have standing members or sort of standing backup members to make sure everyone knows when their meeting is coming up that they're going to attend, so we don't have sort of last minute who's going to go. And then some board members don't feel compelled to go to every single one of these. It was more for scheduling, but to also make sure we don't have, we don't run a risk of having more than four board members there.
Mr. Rotolo.
So in the past, we've done that. All the board members can go. But as Dr. Rogers said, four board members can participate in the meeting. The rest of the board meetings can, the rest of the board members can just sit there. So there's no that if we don't have enough, it's just that you can't have an open meeting with five members there openly discussing things. So everybody can go, it's just that only four people can participate. And I don't think we've had more than four people go for a while.
Hello, okay. And I think for scheduling purpose, you know, we can certainly respond in the calendar, who's going, whatnot. And then like what Mr. Rotolo described, four people will be actively participating in the discussion and everyone else will be sitting as an audience and just observing the meeting without getting into the open meetings law.
Yeah, no, I was actually going to say something similar to that. I wouldn't want to limit the ability of people, of board members to show up. So if, you know, we assign specific people to a committee and somebody's not one of the people assigned, I wouldn't want to make it that only these four people are able to go and the other five don't have the opportunity. So in my mind, I think it works much better how you guys suggested that if it happens that there are more than four, then they can figure out who's coming or not. But the calendar is probably not a bad idea. So that way, you at least know how many people are going. And if you already see there are four people signed up, you could say, you know what, I won't go this week. Or you could say, I do want to go, so you know, figuring it out for scheduling purposes.
Why are we changing it if anybody can go? Why do we need to start doing more administrative things and scheduling? I don't see, is there a problem now that six people are showing up? Why are we changing it? You just said that we'd have to do a schedule. Oh, okay, okay, so we're not changing anything, okay.
We're not changing anything, just so that, because we've already getting the calendar in the past. And it's really just respond whether you're going or not on the calendar, okay? Ms. Koshia?
I'm okay with what we've been doing. I think it's important that we should have at least to know that we have two or three people at least that are going. So is there a way to just get, I know you have to go through the actual calendar at the end to see, but not everybody responds at the same time. Is there a way to just get an email or some kind of confirmation about who's attending the meeting? So you don't have to go into that app and figure out who's attending?
It's not an app, it's an email that we get. It's an email, it's actually in the email to respond, you know?
Kelly knows who's responding to the email.
Oh, okay.
She can collect that.
Okay, so our district clerk, Ms. Moore, is going to collect the data and then share with the board, because she knows who responds to the email, okay? All right, good. And the next thing is that we do appreciate Ms. Yan, Michelle Yan, for reporting. For the past few years, I really appreciate that. And but now that we do need a new person to report to the board and report to the public of the meeting. So I personally, I don't go to every finance committee just because of time commitments, but I go to a lot of other meetings. So I don't think I would be a good fit to report back. And are anyone who would like to do so or would like to ask anyone to do? And I think it should be someone who has been going and who has been, you know, constantly going and be part of that discussion all along. So I'm open for any suggestions. Ms. Aberson?
Why don't you ask someone in the committee if they'd like to do that? Or they could take. Didn't like me, but they should, you know, they should have their committee and report to us instead of, not, instead of one of us, I feel like.
Well, Mr. Greco was very nice enough to volunteer himself to do the reporting to the board. Are we all good with that? With Mr. Greco reporting?
Why don't we let the committee decide who will report back? And we'll make that decision at the next committee meeting. I mean, obviously, I'd like to do it, but there's no guarantee I'm going to be at every single one. But, you know, if someone said it earlier, there should always be at least one board member there. So the committee can decide at each meeting. And if it turns into the same person over and over like it did last time, that would be great. If not, it will be a board member doing it.
And Ms. Koshia, did you want to say something? Okay, are we all good with that? And then this way, we'll find out after the next, the finance meeting, who's going to be reporting back to the board. Okay, all right, thank you. Okay. Next item on the agenda is going to be the bullying prevention presentation. So we are going to have Mr. Steinberg, Assistant Superintendent for Secondary Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, and also Dr. Wodzik, the Assistant Superintendent for Elementary Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. And they are going to present on the bullying prevention.
And just while they're coming to the microphone, I'll just point out that October is bullying prevention month, so all of our buildings, district-wide, have a number of activities that are scheduled and planned in order to make sure that students are alerted. And we have the advantage, and you'll hear a little bit later, how we use that of having a full-time social worker in every building that has allowed us to move from a reactive posture with students to a more proactive posture. So we'll get into that in a little bit more detail, but I wanted to at least take the time to thank the board for making that resource available to us. And I do think that down the road, we'll see that that investment will pay dividends as those kids age through middle school and into high school. So.
We on? Yep. So thank you, Dr. Rogers. Thank you to the Board of Education for giving us this opportunity to share with you all the great programming strategies that we have K through 12 throughout the district that we look to as our sort of bully prevention program, but really to build the skills necessary for our students to be strong in these areas and to ensure that we're building a strong sense of community and a sense of belonging throughout. So we like to start all of our work grounded in the district mission statement to make sure that we always have our eyes on the future, that we're always making sure we're preparing our students for a future that they can't envision, can't imagine. So we have to look at what those sort of fundamental skills are. In this particular area, we look at our character education program, which is pride. And we focus on patience, respect, integrity, dignity, and empathy throughout the program. So our hope is that throughout the presentation, you will see how all the different strategies and all the different work that we're doing are helping our students to learn each and every one of these elements of pride.
And part of our, of Syosset's visitor's statement speaks to developing positive culture, climate, and character. Across the K-12 continuum embedded in developmentally appropriate ways, the principles of culture, climate, and character emphasize the importance of pride, as you see. Compassion and kindness are nurtured throughout the grades, inspiring students to engage in altruistic efforts. This focus on developing positive culture, climate, and character promotes student connection, creating an inclusive environment that discourages bullying by encouraging mutual respect and understanding.
At this point, I'd like to welcome up Mr. Chad Snyder, Principal of Walt Whitman Elementary School, and Ms. Denise Glenn, Social Worker from Village Elementary School.
All right, so patience, respect, integrity, dignity, and empathy. These five words provide the lens through which we educate our students. These values guide our approach to bullying prevention. At the elementary level, we address bullying prevention in three strategic ways: fostering connections, social-emotional learning, and developing perspectives using critical thinking and problem solving. Throughout the presentation, we will highlight ways in which we engage in bullying prevention, how our learning community can collaborate to prevent bullying, and programs and strategies that we use to explicitly teach this message. So fostering connections. Our elementary schools cultivate a school climate focused on pride, helping students build supportive relationships that enhance school connectedness. We respect diversity and inclusion, ensuring that all students feel valued and have equal opportunities, promoting a sense of belonging. This inclusive approach strengthens interpersonal connections and creates a welcoming environment for all. By supporting both personal and academic growth, our elementary schools encourage students to pursue their interests and engage fully with the school community.
So one of the ways that we do this in the school system is we use our Syosset Code of Character and Conduct to support our value system. So I don't want you to think about the Code of Character and Conduct and. So I don't want you to think about the Code of Character and Conduct and Support as a set of regulations. It's more of a, it's a value system that we have here in PSYOSIC. And this value system is so critical and important to everything that we do in school. You'll see in the beginning of the year, our building-level administrators work with our students in the capacity of grade-level teams or an assembly.
Mr. Snyder, I hate to interrupt you when you have a flow, but there's a problem with your microphone and only every third word is getting through. And while I think we can probably hear you, if there are those who are trying to participate from home, they probably are not picking up the audio.
That was by design, Dr. Rogers.
You are cleverer than I could have possibly given you credit for. I apologize.
You want me to start from the beginning, folks?
I think if you could just summarize what you had said and then go from there, that would be great.
So essentially, the PSYOSIC, this one working? Better? No? Yes? I'm gonna stick with this one. All right. It's a heck of a start. So I want you to think of the PSYOSIC Code of Character and Conduct as a set of values that we have here in PSYOSIC. This is not a set of regulations or, they are expectations, but it's more of a value system. So we support this value system as educators in the building when our building-level administrators work with our students in assemblies and grade-level meetings to discuss this value system with them. The importance of this value system gets translated into the classroom when the teachers begin to work with the students as they develop their own set of values using the Code of Character and Conduct in the classroom, so that the students become the authors and the ones that are expecting out of each other, the behaviors that they're looking for. One of the perfect examples you'll see that we do here in the elementary buildings, and you'll see echoed in the secondary buildings as well, is that we have a kindergarten buddies program. And this kindergarten buddies program is, I mean, you just see this code of character and conduct come together in that we have fifth-grade students that are modeling for our kindergarten students what's expected behavior in our elementary buildings.
Programs that foster connections at the elementary level include assembly programs. Yeah, I think so. Okay. School-wide events that promote unity and collective responsibility. Examples of such programming include Unity Day assemblies, as well as various PTA-sponsored activities. We have peer mediation, where our trained student mediators help their peers to resolve conflicts peacefully. Our mediators empower improved communication between students, encourage flexible thinking and decision-making, and support a culture of care amongst their peers. We have our wonderful PTA support, where we are engaging parents through the PTA involving, strengthening the home and school connection. PTA events and meetings connect our families, teachers, and students, and assist with building healthy relationships and school spirit. Wanted to highlight for a minute one of the examples with fostering connections that we do at the elementary level, which is community circles. Through comprehensive training, teachers engage students in meaningful conversations, modeling for students how to effectively communicate ideas, have discussions, and make decisions together. These circles provide opportunities for students to recognize and empathize with one another's perspectives and feelings. They offer a space for problem-solving, discussing peer conflict, and resolving disagreements respectfully. These important conversations can take place in traditional circles, in morning meetings, class shares, and daily check-ins. And they can take place at multiple and varying times throughout the school day.
So at the elementary level, classroom teachers, in conjunction with our social workers, implement a comprehensive social-emotional learning curriculum that focuses on developing key skills such as self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, and responsible decision-making, weaving these principles into daily classroom activities. These key shifts, these key skills enhance students' self-awareness by helping them understand their emotions and how to regulate them, while social awareness fosters empathy and perspective-taking. Students also learn conflict resolution skills to navigate disagreements constructively, and restorative practices are implemented to support those impacted by bullying. Through developmentally appropriate SCL programs, students become more thoughtful, resilient, and capable of handling conflicts.
So nurturing a child's EQ, their emotional intelligence, is foundational to everything that we do at the elementary level. And without that emotional intelligence that we're focusing on, we won't be able to bring the students to their successful level academically. So there's a huge focus on how we are approaching the social-emotional behaviors of our students in the buildings. You know, we spend seven hours out of the day with these little babies in our buildings, and they become our children as much as they are your children at home. And the importance of that is focused on communication. We need to know exactly what a child might be feeling at home and how that might come into school and impact school. And you folks need to know exactly what's going on in school emotionally and socially so that we can work together and partner around helping the child work with their own self-care. We see great examples of this in school every single day when the teachers execute some of our programs. Now, as Dr. Rogers will tell you, we are a little program agnostic in the district. We find programs that work, but our kids aren't cut out of the same cookie cutter, so we have different kids and different ways to approach those kids. And we use those means in every way necessary to be able to help our kids socially. One of the best things that we do in the school is we provide students with reps in a controlled environment. So Ms. Glenn just talked a little bit about community circles. Those community circles provide a safe approach in a controlled environment where students can work on situational issues associated with school and home behaviorally, where we can learn to figure out how to navigate a social situation in a way that is constructive and meaningful for students.
Some of the programs that develop empathy and respect here at the elementary level, we have community expectation assemblies, where students engage in developmentally appropriate assemblies to teach about respect, inclusion, and anti-bullying. This might look like grade-level town hall meetings or our No Place for Hate assemblies. We have Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports, PBIS, which focuses on reinforcing positive behaviors and creating a structured environment. Here, buildings teach, model, practice, and acknowledge pro-social behaviors. And then we have our Harmony SCL program, where we build peer relationships, teach problem-solving, empathy, communication, and collaboration. Harmony's everyday practices create opportunities to cultivate new friendships, promote positive peer relationships, and to help foster a classroom environment in which students feel connected and comfortable. Practices such as partner work, known as Buddy Up with the Harmony program, and group work in classrooms help to support and grow student connections. Students have opportunities to learn about one another and recognize commonalities and differences in flexible groupings designed to promote connections amongst all students in the class.
So PSYOSIC promotes the development of critical thinking and problem-solving skills by encouraging students to engage in perspective-taking discussions that challenge them to consider and respect diverse viewpoints, fostering both empathy and deeper critical thinking. Students participate in community service and outreach projects that benefit their local community while connecting them to broader global initiatives, reinforcing their understanding of real-world issues. Critical thinking and problem-solving are integrated across the curriculum, with students exploring character development in ELA, analyzing cause-and-effect relationships in science, practicing digital citizenship, and much more. This holistic approach not only equips students to handle complex challenges, but also plays a key role in bullying prevention by promoting empathy, respect, and thoughtful decision-making.
I think we can all admit that perspective-taking is a very sophisticated skill, especially for an elementary-age student. So one of the ways that families can partner with the schools is to make sure that your diverse cultural experiences and values are brought into the school so that we can all be prepared to understand who live in our community. That's essential and critical. I'm reminded by my late and great friend, James Connolly, he used to say to us all the time, "We get to do this work." So what I'm asking you folks to do with us tonight is let's do this work together.
Developmentally appropriate explicit teaching is necessary to learn perspective-taking, critical thinking, and problem-solving. And some of the ways that we do this are through the Olveius Bullying Prevention Program, where students participate in lessons that focus on addressing bullying scenarios and develop proactive solutions. We also utilize restorative practices, which build conflict resolution skills through dialogue and mutual understanding, which encourages our students to express their feelings, understand the impact of their actions, and to work together to restore relationships and solve problems. We have our No Place for Hate program. Through thoughtful and intentional school-wide events, the school community engages in the shared understanding that school is a welcoming and affirming environment. We have ongoing professional development, where faculty and staff within the learning community are provided training and strategies to support peer relations. This is done formally with staff PDs and trainings, and also happens informally, where ongoing day-to-day interactions with mental health staff serve as a positive model for faculty and staff and provide insight into communication styles, problem-solving, and de-escalation strategies. Wanted to circle back to the Olveius program for a second. The Olveius Anti-Bullying Program delivers concrete messaging regarding school expectations regarding bullying. Anti-bullying rules are clear and visible to all students, and conversations facilitated with students are useful and necessary in understanding the different types of conflict. So many times at the elementary level, the word bullying is used when it's really peer conflict. Students learn through these lessons that there are disagreements, rude moments, mean moments, and bullying, and how to differentiate between them. Lessons also provide education around the roles of the upstander, the bystander, and bully, as well as how to respond should bullying be witnessed or experienced.
So as a learning community, our collective focus is on fostering thinkers, learners, and leaders who are prepared for the future. We are dedicated to developing pride in every student, ensuring these core values shape their interactions and decision-making. By engaging families, educators, and students as active participants in the process, we create a collaborative environment where everybody is part of the solution, working together to support each student's growth and success. While elementary school serves as the critical foundation for building these skills, the secondary level builds upon this foundation, helping students apply and expand their understanding in more complex situations. To share more about this, I'd like to introduce Ms. Taisha Calbert Foster, School Psychologist at Southwoods, Ms. Melody Chan, Social Worker at HBT, and Mr. Kevin Bonanno, Principal of HBT.
Sorry, this mic is a little temperamental. Good night, everyone. Again, my name is Taisha Calbert Foster. I'm a school psychologist for Southwoods Middle School, and I will be presenting with my other colleagues, Ms. Melody Chan and Mr. Kevin Bonanno, regarding the efforts that are being made at the middle school level regarding anti-bullying. Our anti-bullying initiatives, as already mentioned at the elementary level, are based upon child developmental principles. Because early adolescence is a time of integration between the child's emotional intelligence and cognitive intelligence, as Mr. Schneider already mentioned, students are often vacillating between these constructs that are informed neurobiologically and socially. Middle schoolers have the unique experience of falling between two very challenging developmental milestones. They're navigating their academic as well as their social systems, as well as establishing a sense of self. And because of this conflict that happens sometimes, there is often an increase among middle schoolers with respect to bullying, and more particularly, identity-based bullying. So we find that students, when their own sense of self may be threatened, that they engage in behaviors to disrupt or to distract other people from looking at themselves when they're trying to figure out who they are. And that sometimes results in some of the behaviors that we see. And unfortunately, what research tells us is that this happens the most during middle school. And it's surprising, because you would think that it would happen at the high school level, and it doesn't. It often happens more so during middle school. So that's why concrete instruction on anti-bullying, as previously articulated by the elementary team, that lays the foundation for middle schoolers to begin work on developing their reflective capacities. So while they were working more so on those critical thinking skills, that laid the foundation so that we can continue to build upon that developmental ladder towards more reflective thinking, towards more abstract thinking, because that is what's going to help our students to be able to develop empathy, perspective-taking, right? Understanding themselves, but also understanding themselves in relationship with other people. At the middle level, we achieve this oftentimes through our daily advisory. So advisory at the middle level is often every single day, but we also have an extended advisory that happens twice a month. The twice a month is more of a deeper dive, but the daily advisory is really important because there is value in repetition. And then students have that opportunity to talk about these different contexts, these different themes amongst each other at varying grade levels, because it is mixed grade for advisory. Of course, all of these efforts are further solidified through our shared efforts among our families, right? We have to be able to generalize these different skills, and that's why it's so important, like Mr. Schneider, Dr. Wojcik, and Ms. Glenn had already mentioned, our Code of Conduct and Support is integral to that capacity for there to be a consistency across both settings. So another example of some of the supports that we have in place at the middle level is our Peer Leadership Club, which participates in an annual World Difference, excuse me, an anti-bias and allyship workshop. So that's really important because it gives the onus on our students to be teachers, to be facilitators, to talk about how harm can come from stereotyping, from discrimi, excuse me, from discrimination, showing the importance of being able to respect others, the importance of belonging and kindness. And that is highlighted through some of the traditions that we list in our district calendar, via our morning announcements, and things of that nature.
To continue with that, PSYOSIC pride value, expectations for all students are discussed through advisory, discussion about co-op characters, the conduct, and, you know, Supporting Dignity for All Student Act. And also, we're proud to say that both middle school are No Place for Hate school for a good amount of years. And as a No Place for Hate school, we create dignity and integrity while we create a safe and supportive environment for all our students. And we use Community Circle, which goes back to the elementary-level community group theory, where they, where the foundation and the structure were given to our students at their earlier developmental stage. We have been implementing restorative circle for a while now, and that's an evidence-based practice, which is a great proactive and preventive skill and activity that we use with our middle schoolers. During the process, students learn conflict resolution, empathy for others, again, learning other people's perspective, and also accountability. And I think that is greatly beneficial for our students, because during these restorative circle practice, they are able to learn from others and also listen to others. And that goes back to our theme of respect for all.
Thank you, Ms. Chan. As mentioned in both the elementary presentation and then referenced a little by Ms. Chan, we start the year in the middle schools and continue throughout the year with something called Community Expectations. And these are meetings where we, whether in an assembly format or classroom visits by administrators or counselors, we review several things. We review the Dignity Act for All Students. We go through, again, the Code of Character, Conduct, and Support, highlighting really at the middle level, students' rights and responsibilities, so they understand what is expected of them and what is expected of all of us when working with them. We also use that as an opportunity to just mention, and we do it throughout this time of year, our Say Something app, which is our anonymous reporting. One of my high school colleagues will get into a little further detail in a few minutes about that, but it's, again, an opportunity for students to hear that if they see or hear something that may seem inappropriate about themselves or someone else, that they have a vehicle in addition to all the other ways they do it. These Community Expectations, we continue them throughout the year. We do them quarterly. Again, sometimes it could be even a virtual assembly during our advisory time. We have this built-in opportunity in our day to make sure of that. We also do some of our anti-bias work and go into We also do some of our anti-bias work and go into the language. As Ms. Foster said, this is a time where students will choose words that are hurtful and are identity-based to make fun of or to tease, and we are pretty explicit at this beginning-of-the-year assembly or program about what can and can't be said to students, and we reiterate that throughout. We also have really three big weeks in both middle schools. Our Spirit Week, which is, you know, fairly well-known, school pride and community and team-building, some competition, but also a wellness week and a multicultural week. And during these weeks, these are opportunities for students to take care of their physical and mental health, learn and appreciate the cultures that make up and define our district, and utilize teamwork and school spirit to create an affirming school culture. And again, these are things that are planned by our staff, multicultural work we have week. We have deep connections with our community as well, where we, families are part of it, and it just fosters that feeling of that we are all together and that we, because of that, we should treat each other accordingly. We have a great deal of co-curricular or club activities in the middle level. Some of them do get involved specifically and explicitly with anti-bullying or the treatment of each other, the Peers as Leaders, which you heard about from Ms. Chan. Both middle schools have a GSA. We have Multicultural or Unite Clubs. And then the last couple of years, we have a district-wide Challenger Sports Program that's come through, where students take part in basketball, or track students who may have some physical challenges are able to compete against other schools, too, and that's been a great addition. And just even having our buddies and peers as empathetic supporters and teammates there teaches all of our students about how we want children to be treated. Again, not unlike our elementary colleagues, we are, our partnership with our PTSA and our PTA Council is essential to providing our students great opportunities. You'll see up on the slides, we have a wealth of programs. Just this year alone, the middle schools will have Rohan Murphy, who is a motivational speaker. He is born without legs, and he is able to somehow, he was a wrestler in high school and beyond, and really promotes a message of that empathy, positivity, and that can-do attitude for students. Last week, we were fortunate to have a sports agent, Mark Lean Weaver, came, Why Character Matters. He focused on digital literacy, social, the dangers of social media, and just, again, treatment of each other, how the decisions we make at this age. He likened it to, you're an agent, you only have one client, yourself, and that was really his message to all three grades. As we move into the year, we work with the District Attorney's Office of Nassau County for Stop the Send, which is, again, a digital literacy program about social media, text, et cetera, and the dangers that go along with that. And we're also fortunate to bring in almost every year now, Ryan's Story, which is really the tragic story of a local man, John Halligan, who moved away from this area. He actually, he said he hit his first homerun at HBT on the softball field there, so he connects with the kids, but it's about the loss of his son who committed suicide through bullying. So throughout all these programs, we really do try to hit all elements of this message to our students. And finally, really, and you'll hear more about it, I know, in your next presentation, but we focus on belonging, of course, at the middle school. We've established great partnerships with the Holocaust Memorial and Tolerance Center, where we do an introduction to the Holocaust program with our sixth grade, Symbols of Hate in our seventh grade. In eighth grade, we have our Washington DC trip, where we visit the Holocaust Museum and the African-American Museum, and we continue all of this work, both inside of our classrooms and throughout our advisory program, too. So we are, as Dr. Wojcik said, we are the next step on that pyramid to making sure our kids follow pride and do the right thing, and I'm pleased to turn over to the top part to my colleague, Mr. Rafini and Mr. Fisher.
Once again, I'm Chris Rafini. I'm one of the Assistant Principals at the high school, with Shai Fisher, one of our administrative assistants, to talk the high school. And you can see with all the incredible, the presentation we have, but the incredible foundation that's been built by the elementary and the middle school. It's our job at the high school to continue that work through the curriculum, our developmental school counseling program, and our extracurricular activities that we'll talk about in a little bit. And the goal of all this is to provide the necessary skills that they'll need after they graduate and move on to higher education. The high school is, just like this presentation is, we're at the last leg of the presentation here. The high school is the last leg of the race. So we have four short years. It feels like four years is a long time, but it's not. It goes by very, very fast, and we have four years to build upon these skills that you see that are listed up on the screen right now, and build upon what they did in kindergarten through eighth grade. And what we want is for all of our students to have these when they move on to higher education. So you can see the characteristics listed on the screen here, and they enforce a positive school environment and really will help them after they graduate. And every one of these has been discussed tonight, from kindergarten to eighth grade, and it's going to continue when Mr. Fisher talks a little bit about how it's embedded in our curriculum, and then I'll come back after and talk a little bit about our extracurricular program.
So at the high school level, across the curriculum, we prevent bullying by building upon the pride skills that we have been talking about through many different ways. One way is through our ninth and 10th grade Wellness Advisory Curriculum, where students meet twice a month to discuss a variety of health-related topics. Within the first few lessons, students review what bullying and harassment is and go in-depth on how to go about reporting any bullying or harassment to any of the adults in the school. Additionally, while introduced at the middle school level, students receive an updated refresher on how to access the See Something, Say Something app, an anonymous tip reporting system that is sponsored by Sandy Hook Promise. The lessons not only teach students to recognize signs of bullying, but also teach them to be advocates and upstanders for themselves and others, as well as reinforcing how to utilize this anonymous tip reporting system. Through our Social Studies curriculum, all ninth graders are afforded the opportunity to engage in discussions on how to establish and build community, how to positively contribute to society, and how to engage in civil discourse. With the ultimate goal of global citizenship, the Social Studies classroom becomes a hub for inquiry and discovering one's place in society. Some of the key questions students are tasked with answering are: one, what role do we play in history, in our community, and in our classroom? Two, how can we learn from our past to craft the future? And three, how can we honor our differences while developing a shared community? In our 11th grade health curriculum, all juniors participate in Junior Day, a program that centers on all our pillars of pride and engages students throughout the day in meaningful connections with all their peers and assists students in the realization that not only are they not alone, but that they have much more in common with all their classmates. It's worth noting that highlighting values such as empathy and integrity on Junior Day is not an isolated occurrence. Follow-up of the program is continuous. It occurs numerous times throughout the year, throughout the balance of the school year, during their health classes, and it helps students continuously connect with their peers. Lastly, the juniors and seniors in our Peer Leadership classes, who have been trained and retrained in skills involving peer mediation, how to have difficult conversations, they're provided opportunities to go back to the elementary and middle schools to engage in peer-to-peer anti-bullying education. These opportunities are truly powerful, impact all our students, and provide our high school students with a really, what we call a full-circle moment, as they go back to the elementary and middle schools that they had attended.
So this part, and I get to put a guidance lens on this, as I'm Assistant Principal and I work with the guidance counselors at the high school, it's exciting, because you can see how we reinforce with the curriculum. However, our club's an extracurricular program is very important for students in terms of a sense of belonging at the high school. And again, putting on that lens in terms of speaking, as a, working with the guidance counselors, this is discussed in detail when we meet individually with students, guidance, but also within our guidance groups, in terms of talking to students about the importance of getting involved with clubs, our athletics in the school, and having that sense of belonging as part of the school and the community. Also, our school psychologists, social workers, and mental health team as well, work with students in connecting them to the building and getting involved within the school. And you can see the important aspects that are up here on the screen right now, that it reduces peer conflict, builds positive relationships, and enhances teamwork when you're involved with clubs and athletics. We have over 100 clubs at the high school, thriving at the high school, and it's incredible. And you can see on the screen here, it shows the diversity of the different kinds of clubs that we have and offer at the high school, so it gives students different opportunities to be involved and get involved within these pride skills that are embedded within our extracurricular program. The nice thing also is, and you're hearing from the elementary and the middle schools, our clubs, some of them go down, they speak to the middle schools during the day and connect with them and bridge them together and speak with them and talk to them and model these pride skills to these students. So a lot of our clubs are not just based in the high school, they do move to the middle school and work with our students as well. In terms of athletics, you could see all the teams that we have up on the screen there, and it also, this provides tremendous opportunity to build positive relationships in school community with our students. And like we talk about extracurricular activities, this is extracurricular activities. We talk athletics with students and how this provides the opportunity for them to build positive relationships and teamwork within the school community, and this also, as we've been talking about, helps reduce peer conflict. Lastly, before I hand the program back over to Mr. Steinberg and Dr. Wojcik, you, on the bottom of the last slide and this slide here, there's a link when this gets posted that parents can use as a resource to see all the athletic offerings and the extracurricular opportunities that are offered at the high school. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you, everybody, for your contribution to the presentation, and it's very extensive, and thank you for listening. And so we have this extensive program, K-12, but we are realist, and sometimes our best efforts is that every one of our students are getting these lessons, but things do happen. They are children. So what happens when there is a claim made? So what we did here was, basically, what you're seeing in front of you is how we will approach a claim all throughout the district. It's important to note that anyone can report, so as long as that report is made to any adult, and that comes to administration, comes to a teacher, guidance counselor, social worker, that reporting will maintain confidentiality within that reporting. And we will handle each and every one of those claims with the same consistency, meaning the process that we're going to follow. We will interview, and we will file that investigation fully. So whoever's involved in that will be interviewed. We will collect all sorts of datas, statement, things along that line. Then there'll be analysis of what happens and a determination made as to what kind of supports, maybe consequences, remediation, and/or restoration that needs to be made at that point. When we are looking at each of these incidences, we have to look at them as unique to themselves, because they are as unique as the students involved. So we use our Code of Conduct and Character as a guide as to what is within boundaries, what's acceptable in terms of behavior, but when we start to talk about consequences, then we have to work as a team in determining those consequences that are based here. And it's important to note that once a student has a consequence, it's not something that we can talk about. So we have to maintain the confidentiality as well when we're dealing in the consequences of students, okay? And so sometimes, we do have questions about, you know, what happened to the bully? How many days did the bully get? We can't really talk about those things. We can talk about process, and we talk about, you know, what happens to your individual child, if the child is a victim of bullying, what those interventions would be. We'd work with the parents, we work with our mental health supports and building administration. Parents do, always do, have the right to appeal a decision that's being made in terms of consequences. So requesting meetings with your building administration to talk about what's happening. If parents are not satisfied with that, then they can elevate those concerns to Central Office, and then we can continue to have conversations from there. So there's a very distinct process by which we're going to do this. At the secondary levels, you will see more of the suspension-type activities. That's not what we lean on, but you'll see suspensions. We also function in the restorative circles, restorative practices. Again, all of these are intended to be learning moments. But at the elementary, it's going to be slightly different, so I'll ask Dr. Wojcik just to speak a little bit about that.
So the elementary approach to reporting and addressing bullying is similar to the secondary, in that we ensure a thorough, consistent, and supportive process for all involved. Reports of bullying can be made by students, parents, faculty, or staff to the administration and are kept confidential. Regardless of their classification as bullying, all reports are fully investigated, including interviews with all parties and analysis of evidence. Once an investigation has been concluded at the elementary level, we provide a range of support through our psychologists, social workers, DASSA coordinators, and behavior interventionists. Consequences determined by the administration and guided by the Code of Character Conduct and Support are implemented and kept confidential. In addition to any consequences administered, education at the elementary level is paramount. Remediation and restoration efforts include restorative conversations, interventions, and counseling to promote healing, to repair relationships, and to prevent incidents from reoccurring.
Thank you. So this is a resource slide, so that when folks go to the website, this will be posted. You'll see here that we just give a quick definition of the Dignity for All Act, All Students Act, along with our Code of Character Conduct and Support, with a link to the district website, where you get all the necessary forms and information about that. So if anyone needs that information, it's readily available through this presentation and also through the website. So as we conclude this presentation, part of the messaging here that it does take the entire community to prevent bullying in schools, in order for each one of our students to feel successful, to feel like they belong. And I'll share a quick story that happened not too long ago, actually today. Dr. Rogers and I were walking through the high school, and we overheard comments being made in the hallway, and the comments that were made about some sort of racial slur or something that they were talking about. And the idea is that when Dr. Rogers heard that and he said something to me, we walked over to the students and we had a conversation. The conversation with the students, hey, what's happening, right? What are you guys talking about? Is everything okay? And as we had the questioning with them, it didn't really uncover anything, but what it gave us the opportunity for in that conversation was there was a key moment where I said to the students, you know, if there's something here about racial slurs, can you please, you know, share it? And they said, no, it's not that important. And we said to the students, no, it is that important. And if you did hear something and something happened to you or to somebody in your vicinity, it's our responsibility as a community to make sure we're reporting those things, because it takes all of us. And that's really the key piece here. We have all this great programming, you've heard about the great programming, but as long as we're all working together as a community to make sure we're communicating, and that not only do our students, but our families feel comfortable and safe reporting, and they feel like they can trust us, then to do the kind of investigation we need to do, put the proper interventions and supports in place. So with that, we thank you for your attention tonight, and we're happy to take any questions.
Thank you again. Really, really comprehensive presentation on bullying prevention. Are there any questions from the board for, okay, Ms. Abramson?
So yes, thank you again. That was very comprehensive, and I think the following it from elementary forward and making it more adaptable to age is important. And what you just said truly resonated with me, because one of the things I wanted, I had two things I actually wanted to bring up, but one of them is school personnel listening, being in the hallways, in the corners, in the cafeteria, in the, especially in the, like, as we said, middle school's a difficult time, too, overhearing in all the ways that kids can tease, bully, or be in situations, those eyes and ears are imperative to reporting, kind of nipping it, and like the restorative practice, because it is extraordinarily difficult for students to report, it's extraordinarily difficult for upstanders to report. It's just one of those things that we can teach it, and we should teach it, and we continue to teach it, but the school's personnel being involved in it is going to be absolutely integral into helping stop what a lot of things that are going on. It's just, they, the actions of, the discussions of getting caught and kind of using that as the learning and bringing in- that as the learning and bringing in the people involved, and all the people that are involved are just really, really important because the, my second point was, we talked about restorative practices specifically for the person who was being bullied, or the person who is bullying, or teasing, or whatever it is, but things become systemic super fast. So one kid calls a kid a name, seven kids call that kid a name. Whether that first kid gets in trouble and the, and they're working together with those two kids, there's now 15 kids that it has spread to, and it stays with them for a very, very long time. So it's not something that we can contain into two people. Restorative practice needs to be looked at in a different way almost throughout wherever it's coming from, because groups of people interact and it becomes a really big problem really fast. So that's just something I have noticed and wanted to add into this a little bit. Bullying's a really important thing to me, so I really just want to do whatever we can do to help and support the schools and the personnel and the kids so that we can stop what's going on and create a better environment for them.
Yeah, well, thank you for sharing that, because that's exactly the stance that we have on it as well. And really why, the reason why we have this graphic on the last slide is, is that it really takes us all, and to your exact point, right? We have to make sure that our students, our families feel comfortable reporting. We have to make sure our students from an early age take steward, are stewards of their, of their culture, of their communities, including their school community. So they, when they do hear something, and just like happened in school today, they stop, you know, and they say something to each other, right? And then, you know, and they kind of figure that out. So that's what we're trying to build, and that's why you're hearing about the curricular programs, the co-curricular programs, all of the mental health supports, so that we can empower our students to do that, and our families, and our families, and I think especially with our younger families.
Ms. Van Koff.
So I wanted to second what Lynda said. I, I think the, the proactive efforts by the staff in seeing things with their own eyes and hearing with their own ears is really integral to making a difference, because it is very hard for people, or especially children, in the middle of it to come forward and to, you know, report. It's, it's a fantastic trait to teach them, but it definitely is a learning progress, and it's, it's not something that comes naturally because, for all kinds of reasons. So having a very proactive approach by the administration and the staff is, I think, the most important thing in, in helping shape how it goes forward. And I also do want to thank you guys, the programs are amazing. It's such an extensive program overview that you gave us, and I know the program, I know how deeply the administration and the staff feel about this, and I know it's really important to everyone, so I wanted to thank you guys. I also wanted to flip to a different part, although that outward, you know, traditional bullying is hugely important and should obviously be taken very seriously. I also think that there's an important aspect of kids who struggle, so they aren't necessarily having a hard time specifically by being bullied, but perhaps they have trouble making social connections or fitting in or making friends. And I think that happens at all different levels, elementary, middle, and high school. And I do want to, I do think that the clubs at the high school are amazing, because I do think that gives people a chance to, you know, find their people. One of the things they always say in a school like Cyosset is because it's so large that people should have the opportunity to find their own. You know, everybody can find who are their people, who they're close to, who they're friends with. But I think the flip side of that is that it's very difficult for people who, for such a large school, for those kids to necessarily find each other. And so my question, or one of my questions, is on a, you know, less broad view, but a little bit more nitty-gritty, what kind of things do we do to help facilitate friendships among kids who maybe wouldn't find each other but would maybe be a good fit? Or to help facilitate relationships among children who are struggling? And what, what can we do to help those kids that don't have anything to report but are still, don't have a place or don't have those friendships and those connections?
So at the elementary level, as you saw on some of the slides, the Harmony Community Circles offer an opportunity within the classroom setting for students to engage in one, in conversation and communication and collaboration with one another. And the design of that is that students switch, they're not partnered with just one child, they're partnered with all the different students in the classroom, affording them an opportunity to connect with others that they may not have connected with before. Our social workers push in and do social skills lessons, there are pull-out social skills lessons as well. To your point about training and to speak to this about students who may not quite find their, their people yet, we have training for our lunch supervision staff that allow them to help support students who may be alone or may be struggling with social connections, as well as de-escalating conflict. So there's professional development in an ongoing basis to help support those students, any student who may be struggling with connection, and any student who may be engaged in some form of conflict.
So at the secondary level, we do rely heavily on guidance counselors, absolutely social workers, psychologists. So if we have students who are struggling and they need a connection, they'll make the one-to-one sort of connections there when they have to. It starts early on, though, in the high school. It starts with the ninth grade orientation, where they have a, a club and activity fair, so where the students can come and they can actually meet other students of the same interest. So that's sort of the first go of it, right? And they start to say, okay, I might want to do this, this looks interesting. They might go through the over 100 clubs and activities and say, none of this is for me. Right? And we do pride ourselves that there's something for everybody. So there is a process where students, through conversation, whether, again, with mental health professionals, whether it's administration or their teachers, they can actually propose their own club. And so, you know, it becomes an opportunity with students like that to position them in a leadership role. And they begin to feel empowered, and they begin to sort of take control of that now under the guidance of the adult who's guiding them through that process. So that's sort of the magic of, of that program, helping those kids to really have self-confidence, like, oh, wait a minute, I could just start my own, and I'll go out. And it gives them sort of a tool to talk with their, with their peers about, hey, I'm starting a club, you want to do this? You know, now, that's not for every student, but, but it does exist. One of the things that we're going to be adding this year to help students sort of find their place a little bit more is we're going to be having the eighth grade students come visit the high school in January. And during that period of time, that's going to be during the programming time. So the eighth graders are going to visit the elective programs, and so they're going to get a sense to see all the different electives that are going to be available to them. Again, another opportunity before they enter the high school for them to say, oh, I like this course, this is interesting to me, I think I want to try this, I think I want to try that. Again, fostering that connection across that common interest, so we can capture as many of those, those students as possible.
Thank you. I don't know how this would have worked, but I would love for, for the, especially the lower ages, for there almost to be like a way for the staff or the administration to see different kids and actively or proactively work to identify kids that they feel would be a good match for each other and try to make connections that way. Because I think sometimes the kids that struggle the most have the hardest time doing it, and so they need the extra help pushing them together. I mean, this is probably more nitty-gritty than, you know, for this meeting, but just as a, you know, comment, that I, I think that it would be important to, to focus on making that, making the connections a priority for people, because there's so much, there's so much emotional stress that goes into these kids' lives on a daily basis. And I think having these connections help them move forward and enhance all the other stuff in their lives as well. So thank you guys so much for your work.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Dr. Park.
Thank you for the presentation. I'm so encouraged to see this very intentional plan that we have. It's not just theoretical, something, you know, don't bully, be nice, but we actually have a very extensive action plans, and you're teaching these, and, and you're having the students practice these skill sets that are necessary to build a strong community, and I love that. I'm sure that these exercises that our children are doing are improving the culture of our schools. And I was wondering if we can see the results of this amazing work that we are doing, you're doing here, in terms of data? Check left. How effective we are, such as, do we keep number of students feeling bullied? Do we see the decrease in number of students feeling bullied or outcasted, or increase in number of students who feel that they belong here? Do we have, do we see that people, do they see, our students see students with differences as their peer and not as someone who's inferior than they are? Perhaps a survey of our graduates who see that their teachings here, that the skill sets they learned here at Cyosset help them outside, outside the Cyosset bubble? Do they feel that they equipped to change the, their surrounding? Do they see that what's going on around them that they maybe perhaps was not tolerated as Cyosset, being, being, that are being tolerated outside of Cyosset? And do they feel empowered to change that culture? And another important factor to me personally is that, are we reaching 100% of our students? Is there anyone in high school that are not participating in a club, one club? Do we have an eye on every single student in our district? That's a lot of questions.
That is a lot of questions, but I thank you for them, because they're great questions. And, and so let me, I'll answer the first one in terms of, you know, getting data to, to understand the students' lived experiences in the schools. And that is something that we're actively pursuing now, are different instruments to collect that kind of data. And I love the questions you just posed to us. That may be the survey at the end of the day, but we are looking at different instruments to do that. The data, you know, sometimes can, you know, be tricky kind of the story it's telling us necessarily, so we really want to hear it from the students, to, to your point, speaking to your questions. In terms of, you know, are, do we have an eye on every child? And the answer is yes, we have an eye on every child. I mean, absolutely, we have an eye. And that's why we have growing programs, why we have expanding programs. And, and I also just like, you know, in, in that statement to thank the board for supporting the expansion of those programs, because that's how we do reach every single one of our, our children. The addition of the social workers to all of our buildings, the, the expansion of, of clubs and, and groups and things along that line, that's what allows us to, to reach and make sure that we are having our eyes on each and every one of our students.
Are there any more questions? Mr. Vertolo?
Thank you. Thank you very much. So we're in the people business, and what I've noticed over all the years throughout kindergarten all the way through 12th is the personal touch that all of our teachers, our administrators, principals, our staff have with the children, to almost, to your point, it's not what the child remembers that they learned, it's how the teacher made them feel. And I've seen in so many situations where maybe one kid is left out and an aide or teacher will say, hey, do you want to participate? I've seen other situations even recently where maybe nice things weren't sad, but the teacher pivoted really quickly to kind of make it a learning experience. So at the end of the day, I mean, I can't say enough about how much I love our teachers, but our teachers are the ones setting the example. We're always learning, the children are looking at the teachers to see what are they saying? How are they acting? How are they treating other people? So I know we're doing a lot of stuff with the students, what are we doing with the teachers, to continue to kind of, as you say, this is kind of pre-engineered of superkindness, and that's what seems to make a big difference with our students. And that's what I hear from the graduates and everyone, is how that connection, that one-on-one, how that teacher kind of cared.
So I, I think the question there was about how we're working with teachers?
Development.
Yeah. So I think that that process starts with how we hire, you know, so we, so part of our hiring and recruiting process is, is making sure we're hiring the best candidates for the positions, which includes certain characteristic traits that are going to speak to the mission of the work here. We continue that with our professional development teachers. Most recently, our superintendent's conference day, we did a full day with our teachers where we brought in an outside consulting company, Innovation Design for Education, and we did work specifically on just building on our skills as educators to creating welcoming and affirming environments in a classroom. So that could be as simple as, you know, when you stand outside your classroom to greet the kids, you know, as they come in, ask them how they're doing, sort of thing. It could be simple strategies like that to the more complex strategies that are embedded into instructional strategies themselves. So that's, that, we are constantly focused on that. And what makes our faculty, staff, in my opinion, the best that's out there, is that they're always, the willingness to learn, and the willingness to keep learning, and not to rest on the fact that I've reached a certain point in my professional career and I'm good now. No, they, they embrace it, they want to learn more. We partner, and we'll hear more about it in the later presentation, but we partner with, with Bosse's on, on ongoing professional development opportunities as well, and teachers are constantly seeking that sort of thing out. So we're, we're always have an eye on how do we continue to make the, the spaces and the experiences welcoming, affirming for every single one of our students in this space.
Ms. Ostrick.
So actually, I think that's a really important point, that number of people up here have made, and it should be reinforced. There is a dedicated web of professionals who are out there looking after our kids, and we, and I, as a parent, as a member of the board, I'm deeply grateful for that, that commitment. Dr. Rogers, this presentation, would you describe it as a summary of the programs that are existing in the buildings currently, or does it include sort of upgrades or improvements or changes that have been made recently? Should I think of this as sort of the current standing of programs that are, and sort of how do I think about the degree of change that we've seen in the last year or two as I'm looking at this compared to, say, where we were a year or so ago?
So this is the state of where things are. Some of these programs are maybe a couple of years old, like the Olvea's program is, I think about two years old at this point. Some of these are things that we've been doing for a long time. The PRIDE acronym has been around for 20 years, perhaps, maybe longer. So I, I think what we wanted to illustrate tonight was, there are some programmatic initiatives, and those are sort of evergreen in that we look at them if we feel like they need to be tweaked or improved. The advisory program at the middle schools was around pre-pandemic, but kind of didn't achieve its full potential during the pandemic because the setting just didn't lend itself to advisory. So we've kind of resuscitated it now in the post-pandemic, and we're starting to see it gain some traction and momentum. So we're, we're attentive to this and we're constantly updating it. What you got was a, intended to be a comprehensive presentation, and I would say that there's a range of things in terms of what's newer than other things, but I guess to your specific question, yes, there have been some recent changes to what we're doing. And the other thing that we wanted to illustrate was, we talk about assemblies as being important, but their shelf life is only as long as the reinforcement in the classroom. So if we're not embedding this into curriculum and weaving it in and out of multiple different areas and then reinforcing with not just the curriculum, not just the assembly, but the extracurriculars, the sense of belonging, all of those reinforce each other. And so the more skillfully we knit all of that together, the more shelf life the, the lessons that we're trying to embed in our kids will be, will have.
Thank you, that, that's helpful context. From my point of view, this presentation actually would be best suited for parents and to push this out to parents and maybe the discussion so that they understand sort of the state of the programs that are in the schools. I guess for myself as a board member, I'm, I'm a little bit, I, I feel like this would be the first half of the presentation I would want, and the actual other half of the presentation I would want is, how are we actually doing? Is bullying up or down? Have we had more incidents in recent years? Is there a concerning trend that we need to be looking at? Is there a goal that we need to be fashioning? Are there more resources needed? How do I think about the decision that we're supposed to make on the back of this presentation? It's a little bit, I could use a little more.
So I think to the first half of your questioning about trends, what, what I would say there is, the, we see, you know, flurries of activities and then long periods with much reduced activity. So sometimes that's the result of external things that are going on, but it's very hard to create a true experiment where you would know what happened if you didn't have the intervention. So So there, there is the context, there is the environment, and there's what's happening. We are certainly attentive when we see little, I won't call them trends necessarily, but little constellations of things. We're attentive to those constellations. It's, in some ways, the pandemic baseline changed things because there was, when every kid was six feet away from every other kid, there was a lot less interaction. And because there was a lot less interaction, there was actually a lot less reporting of so-and-so touched me, pushed me, blah, blah, blah. No one touched anybody. So we, we found that the numbers were very low there, so I think that's artificially depressed. And so trying to measure against that as a baseline, I don't think would necessarily be giving you the kind of data as a board member to make a decision about. So I think what I would say is if I saw a concerning trend that necessitated a change in approach, that would be something I would want to report on. If we're seeing the variations that come and go through the normal course of the year and it doesn't look dramatically different from a usual year, I don't know that that would mean we need a major course correction necessarily. I am, longer term, interested in seeing what happens when the, the youngest children who have now had the benefit of a full-time social worker in the building, which has allowed us to go from a reactive posture to a proactive posture, and you heard Ms. Glenn talk about the kinds of lessons that they're doing, as those kids age into middle school, when as, they're experiencing that, that period of time in their adolescence where they're most at risk for these kinds of behaviors. If we see that group of elementary students exhibit fewer of those behaviors when they get to, when they get to middle school, I think that would be indicative. So the interventions that we're making now with elementary students, we won't, we might know if they're effective with them as elementary students, but we won't know for three or four years if they are effective with them as middle school students necessarily. So I don't want you to think that we're not attentive to the data, but I'm not, I'm not sure that we've seen anything directional in the data yet that says we need to have some kind of a course correction. And then in terms of the question about our, our goals and resources needed, I think clearly the goal is for every student to feel like they're in a safe place where they feel welcome and they belong and they don't come to school with worries that they're going to be made fun of or be afraid or any of those things. That's a description of the success case. So in terms of framing that as a goal, is the goal to say that we don't want bullying, which that's an important goal, or is the goal to say we want every student to feel they belong, which encompasses more than just not being bullied, it means also feeling like you're part of something greater? So I don't, I don't know exactly, I'm thinking out loud, but I don't know exactly what the right, right way to frame that goal would be. But it might be to reach even higher than just, at a minimum level, not having to experience something hurtful, but maybe at a more positive level, and also feel like you're part of something greater and you have friends and a social network, et cetera. So maybe that would be the more ambitious of the goals to strive for as a district. And as you're, I know as a board, you're thinking about goals right now, that'd be something that, you know, you might want to wrestle with, how exactly to frame that.
Ms. Duncan?
I'm like, I'm trying. So just to follow up to your answer, I love the idea, well, three things. I love the idea of, which obviously we would often discuss, but personally of making a goal of at a minimum, we want you to feel safe and, but our main goal is to make you feel connected and that you belong and that I've made meaningful friendships and, you know, I've felt connected and that. To Jack's data point, because I know Jack loves the data, so I almost feel like you could do with the seniors, an exit interview. And that would be a good way to track how people feel, you know, if they had to do an, if they had to do the exit interview and would say, did you make meaningful connections? Do you feel that you have, you know, did you have, did you feel like you belonged to the school? Did you feel like you made meaningful connections? Did you feel, whatever it is that we think are important questions? And then if you, that gives you a database, and if they're leaving as seniors, they have every reason to be honest. And if it's a required thing, maybe in social studies or English, then they have to fill it out. But, you know, that may be a way to collect data. And then the second thing was, I wanted to know in the elementary school, since these kids, I'm not sure how many years they've now had the benefit of these new programs that they've had the opportunity to experience, does the elementary school, I don't have any elementary school kids anymore, so do they seem to have made progress in the direction that we're hoping to have made progress in? Does the, does the elementary school environment seem like a more inclusive place where kids are making strong connections and across the board, you know, that, that everyone feels included and that there are less kids who are feeling on the outskirts of things?
You gonna let me speak? So I do believe that elementary school students are experiencing more connectedness as we hear from the principals and hear from the social workers. I think having the social workers as a full-time person in the building has allowed for students and teachers to focus on connections. The Olvea's program allows for students to learn about the different roles, to prevent bullying and to be upstanders. And our Harmony program, the tenants of that program are all about fostering connections. It's all about understanding who the other person is there next to me. And then as we look at our curriculum, it's really just a multifaceted approach because our curriculum has SCL benchmarks interwoven throughout it. So for example, if we're looking at the ELA curriculum and we're looking at character studies, children spend spiral K to five at looking at how characters, what characteristics they have, how they connect with others, and then how they change over time. And then they spend time working with their teachers and with their social workers, connecting it back to themselves. It's very hard when you're young to see yourself in those roles. And so we look at characters to teach us how interactions are supposed to look. And so with all of those interwoven together, we have seen positive connections amongst students.
Ms. Ebbermann and Mr. Vertolo.
That, that was great to hear. That's lovely. Just to Jack, just not to disagree with Jack, but it's a little bit to disagree with you, sorry. I don't feel like the goal, first, okay, I don't feel like the goal should be data-dependent. I think this is a situation where no matter how great we do, we should always strive to do well and better and new programming that seems to come out and be doing well. It's something that we should ever be evolving with and looking at how we can improve it. There's not ever going to be 100% non-bullying teasing world. So this is just something we should continually look at and improve upon, in my personal opinion. And also, I just don't know how accurate, like you can do reported incidences as data, but reported incidences of bullying and teasing and different things are not necessarily with, that's like the crescendo. Like when something happens, when another kid pushes another kid, there's always like more to the story and you'll find out there's more to the backstory, most of the time. Sometimes it's a one-off. But like bullying happens or teasing happens or mean behaviors happen all over the place and aren't reported and aren't part of our, wouldn't be part of our data set and wouldn't be part of the things that we were trying to deal with from elementary school on. So looking at data, we're looking at things that have crescendoed, and sometimes it doesn't get to that point and students don't want to talk about what's happening to them in little bits on a daily basis. So I just, I worry about data being how we make our decisions for something like this.
So I guess I wanted to add something too, because especially at elementary school and a middle school, now we've added co-teachers over the last couple of years. So that's again, a tremendous benefit to the well-being, mental, physical of the, of the children. And, but to go back to, I remember Jack, at one point at some meeting, Jack had, you know, had actually brought up to say that just as important as education was, respect and dignity was just as important. So maybe this is a good, another good thing to kind of put in our goal because that's how important we think it is. I guess my other question too is, we had that period of time to go back to where we had those elementary school kids who you had brought up were six feet apart, were not doing just regular social things. It wasn't just stuff in school. It was, we can't have a play date, we can't have a birthday party. So are we kind of looking at that little cohort of those kids that were probably not learning conflict resolution, because there is that group that would have learned those social skills and those formative years, but then just didn't have the ability and then time, you know, moved on?
Yes, we're definitely keeping our eyes on those students. I think it, it goes back to the explicit skill teaching that we do at the elementary level to teach students how to engage with one another, how to have accountable talk and accountable conversations, how to have reciprocity of conversation, and to engage with one another in productive ways. So the return from COVID beneficially coincided with us being able to have one social worker at each building. And that, I think, has really promoted and supported those skills, learnings for those students.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much again for the presentation. Thank you. Okay. Moving on to the next item. In recognition of School Board Recognition Week, which is October 14th to October 18th, we are going to have Ms. Jen Abraham from PSYOSA Council PTA, PTA's president, to say a few words.
It's very intimidating to follow that presentation. It was wonderful. Thank you. And also, the Yankees are winning three to two, top of the sixth. Okay. My name is Jen Abraham, and I am the PSYOSA Council of PTAs president. Today, we gather to recognize and celebrate an exceptional group of individuals, the members of our Board of Education. These dedicated leaders are often behind the scenes, yet they are the driving force behind the progress, the vision, and the strength of PSYOSA's schools and community. Each of you volunteers your time, energy, and expertise to ensure that every student has access to an outstanding education, and we are deeply grateful for your work and commitment. Thank you for your leadership, your compassion, and your endless dedication. Because of you, our district is strong, our students are flourishing, and our community is united in its commitment to quality education. We are happy to recognize your efforts on this special week, but please know we appreciate your work all year long. On behalf of all of the PTAs in PSYOSA, we present a small token of our appreciation along with a certificate from the New York State School Board Association signed by Dr. Rogers. There is also a theme that goes along with this token gift, coasters. While they may be everyday items, coasters are also a subtle and thoughtful symbol of care, respect, preservation, courtesy, hospitality, and attention to the people and spaces around us. Once again, we thank you for your leadership and tireless support for every student in our community. Thank you. Thanks, everyone.
On behalf of this, on behalf of nine of us here, eight, I would like to extend our heartfelt thanks to the PSYOSA Council of PTAs and for this wonderful token of appreciation. Your continued support and partnership play a vital role in helping us create the best possible educational experience for our students. We appreciate your acknowledgement and thank you for all that you do too. Thank you. And then coming up next, we will have Mr. Kuragnishi at the Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources and Mr. Steinberg at the Assistant Superintendent for Secondary Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, who will present the Anti-Bias Task Force.
Hello again, Dr. Rogers and the board. Thank you once again for giving us the opportunity to provide you with an update on the Anti-Bias Task Force Implementation Plan. As you recall, the last discussion we had about the plan was at the May 29th board meeting. We were able to review the recommended plan. As we look back at just quickly historically, we were able to establish the Anti-Bias Task Force back in November of 2023. And the task force spent the time between then and March 2024, meeting and discussing these recommendations. And it was at the April 2024 meeting that the task force had come here and provided the Board of Education with their recommendations. And at the May 2024 meeting, the board had an opportunity to discuss those recommendations and then provide us with a charge of the work. So we're here now in October to provide you with an update of where we are in this work since May. It's pretty impressive what we've gotten done in a very short amount of time. So we will go through this with you. We will start with just reviewing again, the work was broken up into five subgroups. We had our student experience work, our Code of Conduct and DASSA, curriculum, recruitment, hiring, professional development, and our community outreach. It's likely that you're going to hear a little bit of overlap from our earlier presentation. Some of the things that we did discuss in the anti-bullying will be showing up in this presentation as well. So we'll get started with student experience. And we had a few goals that were discussed around the student experience. We heard them come up in discussion earlier tonight, but this idea of collecting some sort of data in and around the lived experience of students was one of the goals, and trying to improve student connections amongst our groups. With all those groups we talked about that we have throughout the district, we want to be careful that we're not siloing the groups and that we're finding opportunities for the groups to connect with one another. And then, of course, working with our faculty to ensure that we have these welcoming, affirming environments. So where we are right now in those three goals is where we look at the data collection. The superintendent's cabinet will meet six times a year, meets twice with each level. And it's through those meetings where the questioning now with the students can be updated to focus more on their experience specifically around belonging. Okay? And so there'll be work done in that area. The principals meet with their elected student officials on a monthly basis as a, as a way to understand where the students are, where their needs are, what they need to be doing. And as discussed earlier, we're in the process of reviewing different tools for collecting that data around the student experience. It's, it's a little nuanced work because there are a lot of tools out there, but we want to ensure that whatever tool we eventually select for this, that it does speak to what we want our students to graduate as. What, what do our students look like? What are those skill sets? We want to make sure that we're measuring that accurately. So that work is ongoing. In terms of the improved student connections, you noticed how we broke up the clubs earlier. We have a number of these affinity multicultural clubs, but we've got to be really mindful with those because again, we don't want, we, what we do want is we want kids to be able to walk into school and say, hey, I'm like this group and I feel very comfortable over here. But at the same time, we don't want that to keep them ostracized and marginalized from the rest of the group. So we've looked to form groups that bring the students together. Unite is one of those groups that we reported on last year that was formed, and that brings students in from multiple groups. There are activities that go on in each level as well that bring these together. You heard the principal at HBT talk about earlier, Kevin talked about, the multicultural weeks that they have, the wellness weeks, events like that. At the middle, at the middle level, they have shared decision-making committees where the students are on these committees with administrators and teachers, and they are out there looking for ways to connect. Just today, we had a Tech Free Tuesday event today at the middle schools where the cellphones and the Chromebooks during lunch periods throughout the day, the kids were disconnected. And I will tell you, anecdotally, I walked through one of those lunch periods and it was, it was great. Now, it was great. Kids were connecting with each other at different levels. It's not to say they don't connect the other way, but this was, this was at a much different level, seeing the kids eye to eye, seeing kids out there playing games, board games, doing crafts, and all of these kind of non-tech sort of ways in which they connect. And it was, it was really wonderful to see today. We talked earlier about having eighth grade visits to the high school, again, making that high school, that middle to high school connection early on, helping students see themselves in the curriculum in the courses they want to see so that they begin to feel connected, you know, more to themselves and to their peers and to the buildings as well. And as you've heard, the No Place for Hate initiatives in all of our schools. And all the No Hate for Plate initiatives are school-wide events and activities. That's part of the qualification for No Place for Hate. The promotion of our affirming environments in our schools, again, we have our superintendent's conference days, we have ongoing professional learning for our staff, we work with outside consultant firms, we work with our, our, our district BOSIs. firms. We work with our district BOCs to help us provide those opportunities for staff. Either we're sharing those opportunities or staff are coming to us because they're interested in learning more about those. So for our Code of Conduct and DASSA, I will pass that off.
Good evening. Our implementation goals from the Task Force that involve the Code of Conduct are essentially to make enhancements to the code, to make it user-friendly, translate documents, develop a great appropriate bridged student handbook, and provide more additional opportunities for our families in their understanding of the code. Additionally, we're also providing more training and ensuring that our DASSA coordinators receive ongoing training and support, and that our reporting tools are accessible. So our Code of Conduct progress, we have a plain language Code of Conduct that's available on the district website. At the beginning of the school year, we address and review the Code of Conduct with our students at all levels. So we had kickoff assemblies at the elementary schools. Our administration, the middle schools presented in the classrooms. And then at the high school, we have social studies lessons that touch upon the code. With respect to DASSA, we have our DASSA reporting forms in five languages. Additional translations are forthcoming. We have, our students and their families collectively speak 42 home languages. So we're going to incorporate more of those home languages, those translations of our reporting forms. And then, at the beginning of the school year, at Superintendent's Conference Day, all staff were DASSA trained. It's important to note that, and some may notice on the board agenda, that the board's first policy reading of the code happens to coincide with our presentation tonight. So we appreciate the board for ensuring that the policy remains up to date, and then the district will continue its work to enhance the code and strengthen its accessibility.
Okay, then we have our goals in around the curriculum, which were focused specifically on cultural competency and social media. So we are looking at those two areas, and specifically we had the opportunity this summer to address these goals at all levels through our summer curriculum writing opportunities. So at the high school, where our project's focused a lot on civil discourse, community building, leadership skills, critical thinking, and our digital media literacy across the curriculum, you can see that. We have everything from business through social studies, our peer leadership, and specifically in our library program in partnership with SUNY Stony Brook, they have a Center for News Literacy where we're able to really build upon the already curriculum there. Our middle schools were able to dive deeper into all of these SEL components of self-awareness management, the relationship skills, and responsible decision-making through a specific advisory program this summer. And then at the elementary, two really important projects were happening, one around world language, and that was the updating of the FLEX program, where elementary students now are exposed to the basics of the Romance language, to the basics of the Asian languages now. So they build a nice foundation at the elementary level. So now when they move into the middle school, right, they have a little bit more understanding of what these languages are, and then they can begin to get more specific into some of the Romance languages, some of the Asian languages there. And then in our Fine and Performing Arts, there was a project to really infuse non-Western text into the Fine and Performing Arts, again, broadening that perspective, giving elementary schools' students that opportunity to see and understand, you know, people who may be different than they are. In social media, a lot of work has been happening around this area. We're really bolstering the curriculum to ensure that our students become really interrogators of the media that they're, that they are being exposed to. This curriculum at the secondary level was a secondary project where now the teams are working to integrate this curriculum into all of the curriculum. So where this would happen typically in a library push-in or pull-out class, now the goal of this work is to take this curriculum and get it through and infuse it every place. Because it's in every part of our curriculum where students are faced with media. They're faced, whether it's in a digital format, whether it's in a physical format, but they've got to become critical and be able to analyze that media in that way. And that begins, again, at the elementary level, where the focus is more in digital citizenship, because at the elementary is where the students are really first becoming exposed to this kind of world. So it starts there, and again, we build it forward. You heard earlier about the Tech Free Tuesday we had talked about for a bit, and the Character Matters Assembly. We're really this idea of ABCs representing yourself, having the opportunity to see that particular assembly. It was interesting how, you know, the speaker referred to the cellphone as almost like a weapon because of the damage it could do. And sending that message to kids at the middle level to get them to understand responsibility behind really what's sitting in their pockets.
Recruitment, hiring, and professional development. Our implementation goals involve examining recruitment and hiring processes, providing more professional development that would address unconscious bias, orienting the new faculty to the Cyosset way, and then strengthening our evaluation and accountability processes. With respect to progress along these goals, Mr. Steinberg, my colleague, had discussed already our Superintendent's Conference Day professional development that was provided to our faculty and staff, including NASA BOCs Equity, Inclusivity, and Belonging Support Service, where we are able to receive professional development through that network. Refining our recruitment hiring processes, we continue to prioritize reaching out and attracting a large diverse talent pool. You know, we subscribe to the belief that talent is evenly distributed across the population, and therefore, it's imperative that we tap in and attract that large pool. On a given year, we might, we typically will hire 25 teachers, new teachers and administrators, and therefore, our strategy is to attract a large pool and then hire a limited, from that pool, a limited number of candidates from, for those vacancies. Orienting our new faculty to the Cyosset way, we do this through our interview and onboarding process, through the types of questions that we ask, through the rapport that we generate and during our, and the culture that we, that we present during our interviewing, our interviews that are often connected at the building level and at the district level. New teacher orientation is provided at the beginning of the school year, and then we have a robust, comprehensive mentoring program that is coordinated also by our strong mentor coordinators who are district-appointed. Lastly, all staff are systematically evaluated according to the district's approved APPR plan.
Okay, and our fifth area of work is around community partnership, which we've always prided ourselves on having very strong community partnerships and working very closely with our PTAs. The goals here is really to, you know, work, continue to work together and continue to develop, you know, new initiatives, better ways to communicate, workshops for parents, orientations for families, to continue to work at that. And then the marketing and branding, which really would be the sort of that school-to-community communication to make sure people know who we are and what our message is. And that's, and that's a big piece of it. So where we are in those goals, right now, there is discussions going on about parent workshops, about what those need to look like, which topics we should be looking at initially. We continue to partner with our PTA's Cultural Unity Committee on work, continue work on our multicultural events and activities, and we have a very close relationship with our PTAs in helping us to put on the reflections, also curriculum presentations that happen at the secondary level. And we continue to listen to that feedback as that becomes very important as to what the families want to hear in the community. As far as our marketing and branding, we do have a dedicated page on the current website for the Anti-Bias Task Force work. So that is somewhere that people can go to keep up to date with what's happening. This presentation will be posted to that website as well, as have the past presentations. That will be there. And we're in the process of revamping the district website as well to make it more accessible to more people and working with that. And the Board of Education has been, and you have been, you know, involved in discussions about a portrait of a graduate. That is a conversation about what, what are the skills? What kind of students do we want to be graduating here in Cyosset? And what makes our graduates special? What kind of skills they need to be successful in the future? And what do we need to be doing to make sure we are successfully getting them there so they can find success in their post-high school careers? So that's where we are in our Anti-Bias Task Force progress at this time. So thank you once again for giving us the opportunity to share that with you, and we are happy to take any questions.
Thank you for the presentation. Are there any questions for Mr. Steinberg and also Mr. Kuranishi? Dr. Park? Thank you for the presentation. Can we go back to, I think it's the second, no, Student Experience Goals Progress. Are we looking at, in the data collection section, are we collecting the data from the students or are we reviewing the tools for collecting the data?
So we're in the process of viewing different tools. So we're not, we're not quite collecting data from students. No, we're working with, I'm currently working with some of our area districts to find out which tools they're using, what kind of success they might be finding, what kind of failure in those tools they might be finding. Just to ensure that before we make a decision about any one of these tools, we're learning from maybe what's happening around us first.
And do you expect to, when do we expect to actually implement?
The, the goals here is that these are things that we complete within this year. So this is something we're actively working on with the goal of having something to present to the board this year.
Okay, great. Thank you. And you said, I didn't catch the Stony Brook affiliation, their library system. What are we doing with that?
So Stony Brook has a Center for News Literacy where they teach basically the skills required to critically analyze what you're seeing in the news, in the media. And so our LMSs went to a three-day workshop on that in the spring, and that became the basis for the summer curriculum writing program. Our LMSs and our libraries typically lean on the common sense media curriculum for the digital citizenship and for the media fluencies. This is another level of it. So this helps us to elevate our game with it so we can elevate the kids.
I think that's very important. Yeah, thank you. And one last one. How many times a year do we have our teachers, administration go through the continuing education or professional development program where they learn about their own unconscious bias? I think it's important for all of us to actually learn to recognize in ourselves those biases that we were not even aware of became just part of, you know, our daily lives. And I think it's important that we learn to understand the different style of addressing what's important for each family, and also not just accept, but also learn how to direct people from different culture to see what we are doing here is actually beneficial for their children. Because all parents throughout history, throughout location, we all want what's best for our children. And when we come from different culture, we are stuck in that culture of how to take care of our children. Sometimes that prevents parents from actually doing what's best for the children. And we can't just say, oh, that's their way and leave that alone. That's not, I don't think that's healthy. But we can't just say, ah, they're like that, you know, and be dismissive either. So how many times a year do we train or teach our teachers and administration to change and, you know, give them the tools to do that?
Okay, so I'm hearing two parts to the question. One about training, how often, you know, staff are being professionally developed in this area, and then also from the parent's side, helping parents understand the value of the overall school program, you know, and then helping kids understand that sort of piece of it. So we don't have a set number of times that we train people to do things, but I will tell you that we have been focused on implicit bias for many years here. And the opportunities we have to, to have the faculty learn as a whole are typically through our Superintendent's Conference Days. So we always try to find that opportunity within those three days to make sure we keep revisiting. So as we did this year, we had a whole session this year on implicit bias. And we talked about, again, reviewing sort of what that means, and then how does it, what does it look like in your daily work, right? So there was conversations that are centered around how your lessons are being designed, how your assessments are being designed, how you're talking with students, understanding, you know, even, you know, what happens at a house, expectations, things along that line. So it's something that we're consistently focused on, to the point that earlier when I was talking about how teachers will initiate this professional development, we have so many of our teachers and our administrators who recognize that, they know that you really can't stop learning in this arena. You have to keep learning. You have to keep broadening your horizons and things like that. So it's hard to put a number on it, but what I can, what I can assure you is that it is definitely a focus. It is definitely something that is not only happening at a conference day, but at the building levels and during faculty meetings, department meetings, when teachers are collaborating and looking at their materials. And it's something that, the point earlier was brought up about bullying and about, you know, setting goals about bullying and that the idea that, you know, we always have to try to get better. So this is the same kind of arena. We always just have to try to be better in that because, as we all know, as aware as we are of our own implicit bias, we just, we can never be fully aware of that, right? So just by being aware of it's our first step, and then we, we continue to learn there. I do want to address the second question by just jumping ahead in the slides, back to the community partnership, because you brought something up that I think is important to, to make note of. The work we have done in the past with the Cultural Unity Committee, Community Committee, excuse me, when we had a changing, when the demographic really started changing years back, there was a value placed on the academics well above the extracurricular program. And there were families coming in who didn't have a value to that. And so working with the Cultural Unity Committee, we were able to bring families in with, and our students, and do a full presentation on the value of extracurricular athletics to whole child development, you know, in this culture, in our school culture, which, which was really valuable to help people see things from the same perspective and try to bring the community together to kind of view how we educate our students from the same lens.
Before we leave Dr. Park's point, we do have explicit training in implicit bias that we go through. And so maybe Mr. Kuranishi, you could talk about the required training that all staff has to undergo every year.
So annually, we have our staff complete compliance training, and part of that compliance training is to address issues of bias along with, and that's also addressed in our DASSA training as well. And as, you know, with respect to DASSA, the Dignity Act and the Code of Conduct applies to all members of the school community. And so, so there is training there, along with Title IX and other factors that, other training that, that are, require our staff to be more reflective on their processes and that's, and thinking, and that's why it's required on an annual basis.
Mr. Ostrick.
So I'm very pleased to see the mention of the marketing of the Portrait of a Graduate from Board of Education discussions. I think probably one of the most important things we can contribute to this effort is an elucidation of shared values, shared experiences, shared goals, what it is that we're trying to make a brand in Cyosset. The thing that's missing here, though, is we're demanding a few ETAs and implementation deadlines and et cetera. Can you give us some accountability? When do we need to provide this to you?
You're both wise to hesitate. I'll take that one. I don't blame my junior administrators for not wanting to give the board deadlines to be held accountable to. What I would say is, I'll go back to mentally the timeline slide. So your discussion as a board was May 29th. We had June, which is a busy month, as we all know, because of the activities there, and then the month of September, which was also busy because of our activity around the bond. So a lot of work was being done behind the scenes over the summer. So we're certainly mindful of the fact that the board is working on goals and anticipating that that's a process that you're going to move through this year. And I think what we're trying to do is head towards an intersection with those goals and also kind of pay attention to the direction that the board is going in so that we're going to arrive at the same place at the same time. So, you know, we have the benefit of being able to see that trajectory that the board is on. I thought the conversation that the board had back in the spring about the Portrait of the Graduate was helpful in elucidating some things that, even if the words weren't exactly where they were, it seemed they encompassed what the board had been talking about, and so that's helpful for us. So I think as long as we continue to move, not in parallel, but actually in two lines that look like they're going to intersect, we're going to get to where we need to be soon.
And you can apply all that to the first presentation. In other words, the work we're doing with goals will apply In other words, the work we're doing with goals will apply equally to the earlier presentation.
Yeah. This board, even as its membership has changed over time, has always been very consistent about, I won't, I won't frame them as goals, as formal goals, but it has always been that the board has recognized that this is a diverse community, and the board has found ways of very tangibly recognizing the diversity that is here and how we shape the program, shape the calendar, shape our relationship with the PTA, et cetera. So, the board has been very focused on making sure that all students feel as though they belong. So, there have been a number of programs that have been introduced or iterated over time that the board has been very supportive of. The board's always been very consistent about wanting to see our students' mental health improve, and you've invested in really tangible ways in giving us the resources that we need. So, even though those goals have not been made explicit and necessarily named and framed, it's very clear the work that you're doing, and we clearly see that work in terms of what you're resourcing and what you hope to achieve with that. So, the, the more explicitly you frame it, the better it is for us to hang our efforts off of that framework. But it, it's still very clear to us the work that the board is aiming towards.
Okay. All right, so now we are, thank you again for the presentation. And we are going to have Dr. Rogers give his monthly superintendent's report.
My report would be fairly short. Just wanted to do two things. One, I first wanted to express my appreciation to the public for the successful vote on the bond last week. During the time running up to the vote, I'm not at liberty to share any of my own personal feelings on the subject, but now that the vote is over, I'm, I have no such constraints, and I will just say that I continue to be tremendously impressed in how this community invests in the future of its children, and we don't take that investment lightly. We recognize that we have a, a big responsibility ahead of us to do our very best work with the resources that the community has provided. So, we're going to be extremely thoughtful and extremely careful about how we invest those resources to make sure the community gets everything that, full, I was going to say, well, I will say bang for the buck, because I can't think of something that is less colloquial to say. But we recognize that people expect us to do our very best work with this really important aspect of our workers' administration. And I will just say, having seen the district, which went through a lengthy period of disinvestment in its facilities and over the course of the last 10 years, has really made a concerted effort to catch the facilities back up again. I do think that the results from this investment will feel like a turning point in the facilities of the district. And so, I think that's something that our, our students will even be excited about. I saw some kids at a practice after school today, and they were asking me if they thought they were still going to be in school at the time some of these new facilities were built. So, it's kind of exciting to see that the kids were following this very closely and excited about the facilities that might be available to them in the not-too-distant future. So, recognizing that this is a big investment and wanting to be accountable, we're going to work on a webpage. We've already started working with the architects to try and help the public stay abreast of where we stand in the process. We can't work on all of these projects. There's some 50 projects altogether. Can't work on them all simultaneously and do well with all of them. So, we're sequencing them. We want the public to understand some of the choices that were made around the sequencing, the highest priority being health and safety, and right after that, dealing with places where we're really crowded because of enrollment. So, and then just helping, something that we'll be tracking is how long it takes these projects to get approved, so that we can start the process of building them. So, we're working on a website that will do all of that, and, you know, we'll obviously be interested in hearing update from the public. Now that we've moved through this period of heavy attention on the facilities, we have the board's decision from last year to move forward with complying with state requirements, state regulation for us to adopt a new mascot. So, just wanted to let the board know that we're going to be starting that process in the near future. It will involve, as we talked about last year, having a committee that will be charged with collecting and evaluating potential choices. But ultimately, we want to solicit broad amounts of public feedback on any narrowing of those choices. So, I'll have more to say on that in the future, but expect something from us in the, in the not-too-distant future. And then, we have a handful of things that we're going to bring to you at the November board meeting. So, I look forward to seeing you then.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for Dr. Rogers? Mr. Greco?
So, we had a lot of presentations tonight, and it sounds like a bunch more coming. And the ones tonight were, were outstanding, so thank you. Dr. Rogers, I'm wondering, I know you've given us updates on residency enforcement at sort of regular intervals, and I know we had a lot on for tonight. Just wondering if you thought about when you'll give us that sort of next update? No rush, obviously, it's the beginning of a new year.
So, be happy to do that. I think over the course of, again, my 10 years here, we've periodically updated the board on where we are with residency, our process for vetting people as they come to the district, our process for what happens when people move out of the district, our process for how we work to try and uncover fraud where fraud may exist. So, I'd be happy to give you another presentation on that, and maybe what I can do is work with Ms. Chang to decide, you know, where it fits in terms of not wanting to have too long a meeting. So, we have several presentations coming up, but I'm sure we can identify a, a time in the not-too-distant future where we can update you on where we stand.
Sounds good. Are there any more questions for Dr. Rogers? Mr. Rotolo?
Thank you, Dr. Rogers, for your presentation. And I also want to thank you, because I know how much work over so many years that you put into this project. I'm really happy that the community has come together, and their priority is education. I think this is going to be transformational for our district. So, I can't thank you enough, because I know how many years you put into this. So, thank you under heaven and the earth, thank you.
Yes, thank, thank you, Mr. Rotolo. And it's, it's Dr. Rogers and his entire team working countless hours, really just countless hours in putting this together. And also, that I want to also thank the community for supporting this bond vote. It really means a lot to, to our students, our staff, and, and just the entire community. And we want our facilities to reflect the, the quality of education that we have here in Sciocet. So, thank you to, to everyone. Okay, and we have no legislative items, and we do have one discussion item. One member of the, of the board attended the NISBA Business Meeting. And Dr. Park, would you like to share with us a few words?
Okay, I'm happy to report that it was only five hours, and now they ate. Yesterday, we received an email from the Executive Director of NISBA, Robert Schneider. And he summarized what I was going to say today. And his words were a lot more eloquent, so I'm going to use his words. A truly authentic example of democracy in action occurred last week at NISBA 2024 Virtual Annual Meeting, Business Meeting. More than 350 delegates considered all 37 resolutions that were proposed by the initial July submission deadline, 25 recommended by the Resolutions Committee, and 12 not recommended. And we voted against considering an additional late resolution. By the end of the evening, delegates adopted 26 positions. Non-voting board members viewed the process, proceedings from the virtual gallery. All 25 recommended resolutions, number eight with the, with an amendment, and one that was not recommended resolution was adopted. Delegates also elected officers for the 2025 calendar year. Sandra Ruffo, Ruffo as President, Christine Schnar as First VP, and Rodney George as Second VP, and Thomas Nespeck as Treasurer. Positions adopted during the business meeting will remain ineffective for five years unless they are achieved sooner or otherwise rendered moot. NISBA governmental relations team will work toward advancing those proposals that require legislative, legislative change, change to be implemented. And subset of us will attend the annual NISBA meeting, the Sunday to Tuesday. And as usual, I assume that we will report to each other and share our new acquired wisdom and knowledge.
Yes, that's going to happen at our November meeting. Okay, thank you, Dr. Park, for attending the meeting again. Mr. Greco?
Dr. Park, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but it annoys me a little bit that yours was only five hours and mine was eight hours. But I understand there was a change in the way they handled the discussion. Could you explain what they did to sort of keep it, you know, not that we could use it, but I'm just curious how it worked?
So, in the beginning of the meeting, we decided that each resolution will have six-minute maximum discussion time. And if people wanted to discuss further, we had to vote whether we wanted to continue the discussion or we want to stop the discussion. And each person who wanted to speak about the resolution had one minute to talk. And many times when people wanted to, some people wanted to extend the discussion time, when voted, they were shut down.
Okay, true act of democracy. Okay, thank you. All right, there's no unfinished business, and we are going to the new business. 11A is the approval of staff changes. Can I have a motion, please? Mr. Greco, seconded by Ms. Falco. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? 11B is the approval of stipends and hourly rates 2024-2025. Can I have a motion, please? Mr. Rotolo, seconded by Dr. Park. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? 11C is the approval of coaching recommendations. Can I have a motion, please? Mr. Greco, seconded by Ms. Falco. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? 11D is the appointment of Security Infrastructure Manager. Can I have a motion, please? Mr. Rotolo, seconded by Ms. Koshyer. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? 11E is the approval of settlement agreement. Can I have a motion, please? Ms. Falco, seconded by Mr. Ostrick. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? And 12A is the certification of votes. Can I have a motion, please? Mr. Rotolo, seconded by Ms. Koshyer. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? For the next two resolutions, I'll be conducting a roll call. So, when I call your name, please respond with yes or no. 12B is the authorization of resolution of issuance of bonds and expenditure of capital reserve funds. Can I have a, can I have a motion, please? Mr. Greco, seconded by, okay, Mr. Ostrick? Okay. Ms. Falco? Okay, Mr. Greco?
Yes.
Ms. Chang, yes. Mr. Rotolo?
Yeah.
Dr. Park? Ms. Koshyer? Ms. Eberson? Okay, Ms. Levitan, not present. Okay. 11C is the authorization of resolution of issuance of bonds. Can I have a motion, please? Mr. Rotolo? Okay, and I'm going to go from reverse order. Seconded by Dr. Park. Okay, and I'm going to go in the same order. Mr. Ostrick? Okay, Ms. Falco? Mr. Greco? Ms. Chang, yes. Mr. Rotolo?
Yes.
Dr. Park? Ms. Koshyer? Ms. Eberson? Ms. Levitan, not present. Okay, thank you. And 12D is the, is the first reading of revised policy 5300, Code of Character, Conduct, and Support. The second reading of stated policy will be during the November 4th, 2024 Board of Education meeting. The said policy will be available for inspection on the district website. 11E is the authorization of undue burden independent evaluation hardship waiver for district certification. Can I have a motion, please? Mr. Greco, seconded by Ms. Falco. Are there any questions?
Well, well, hang on. I sort of had something to say on D, but I'll say it now. The first reading of the Code of Conduct and the changes to it will be available on the website. Is that going to be available for parents to see immediately? Will there be a black line? How quickly can people find it if they want to? It will be under our quick links. Can you just give a quick summary on how folks can find it quickly? If they have comments, where they should send comments to? And what kind of information in terms of reviewing the policy will be available for them? Because the Code of Conduct is normally a thing that parents and students care pretty deeply about.
It will be on the website. I don't know the, the exact page, but there will be a link to it that will come straight off of the homepage, so someone won't have to lurk, look any further than the homepage in order to find it. We'll have a black line version of it that'll be on there, so the changes will be apparent. And what we'll do is, we'll have an email address on that same page where the Code of Conduct is posted for people to offer their comments. And at the November meeting, there will be a hearing. State law requires us to update the Code of Conduct every year. As part of that process, it also requires the opportunity for a hearing, so that will occur at the November meeting as well.
Okay, thank you. And 12E is the authorization of undue burden independent evaluation hardship waiver for district certification. Can I have a motion, please? Mr. Greco, seconded by Ms. Falco. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? 12F and 12G can be taken together. They are the approval of Committee on Special Education and the Committee on Preschool Special Education Recommendations. Can I have a motion, please? Mr. Rotolo, seconded by Dr. Park. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, 13A is the authorization of service contrast. Can I have a motion, please? Mr. Greco, seconded by Ms. Falco. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? 13B is the authorization for special education and/or nursing contrast. Can I have a motion, please? Mr. Rotolo, seconded by Dr. Park. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? 13C is the authorization to participate in joint municipal cooperative bidding program, network copyers. Can I have a motion, please? Mr. Greco, seconded by Ms. Falco. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? 13D is the authorization for piggybacking. Town of Hempstead, Snap-on Industrial. Can I have a motion, please? Mr. Rotolo, seconded by Ms. Eberson. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? 13E is the approval of student club charters 2024-2025. Can I have a motion, please? Mr. Greco, seconded by Ms. Falco. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? 13F is the approval of student, student group charters 2024-2025. Can I have a motion, please? Mr. Rotolo, seconded by Ms. Koshyer. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? 13G is the acceptance of donations, standing library. Can I have a motion, please? Mr. Greco, seconded by Mr. Ostrick. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? 13H is the acceptance of donations box. Can I have a motion, please? Mr. Rotolo, seconded by Ms. Koshyer. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? 13I is the acceptance of donations, red oak tree. Can I have a motion, please? Mr. Ostrick, seconded by Mr. Greco. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? 13J is the, is the disposal of broken surplus and/or absolutely equipment, supply, supplies and books. Can I have a motion, please? Mr. Rotolo, seconded by Ms. Koshyer. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, all right, now we are going to move on to Audience to the Public. Okay, just bear with me. I am going to just read something, the new procedures that the board implemented a couple of months ago. The Sciocet Board of Education and Administration welcome attendance at the Board of Education meetings. The board business meeting will be livestreamed and recorded. A link to access livestream is available on the district website. And the board values community input and provides opportunities to offer that input via email or in person. Persons who wish to speak during Audience to the Public must, must register online to speak in advance of the meeting by 5pm. to speak in advance of the meeting by 5:00 PM, the day of the board meeting. A link to the pre-registration form will be made available on the homepage on the district website and one week, one week before the meeting. Persons wishing to address the Board of Education in person during audience to the public must conform to procedures adopted by the board. Speakers' remarks must conform to the following rules. One, all speakers and observers are required to conduct themselves in, in a respectful and civil manner in accordance with rules set by the board. Two, speakers must address the board only, not members of the audience or the audience as a whole. Three, speakers must limit their comments to issues concerning school district operations, school district affairs, or board of policy. Four, because of rights protected by state and federal law, no, no speaker may speak about an individual student or staff member, nor will the board or administration entertain questions in public regarding collective bargaining, negotiations, personnel matters, student matters, or legal matters. Five, no speakers may speak about decisions involving specific personnel or specific students. If a speaker wishes to address the board concerning specific personnel or specific students, the speaker may write to the board. Six, speakers may not use epithets, slurs, personal abuse, lewd, and obscene speech, profanity, libelous speech, threats, and/or fighting words or gestures, defined as words or gestures which by their very utterance inflict injury or tend to incite a breach of the, of the peace. Any person who violates the rules above will immediately forfeit the balance of their time addressing the board. To be recognized to speak, person must register with their full name and address, and attest, and attest that they will comply with the rules stated above. In addition, only residents of Sciocet Central School District are permitted to address the board. Each resident will have four minutes to address the board, which may be extended or reduced by the discretion of the chair for good cause. The board will not permit polling of the board members by speakers. After every resident wishing to speak has had, has had an opportunity to do so, the board and/or administration may respond to the resident's questions or comments. No resident will be permitted to address the board more than once per meeting. No one may record another member of the public in a manner that is disruptive or confrontational. Okay, and with that, I would like to call on